Everybody ready?
Okay. Everybody ready? Okay. Call meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Arcomando.
Present.
Ms. Borelli. Mr. Ocello. Ms. Ianello. No?
We have no microphones, Matt. There you go.
Ms. Ianello. Mr. Laurentino. Ms. Roloff. Ms. Torvik.
Here.
Ms. Traverso.
Here.
And Ms. Adaroli.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Here he comes.
The Pledge of Allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Turn, okay.
Oh, sorry.
They had to call you out, right? You couldn't just sneak in and sit down quietly, right? Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provision of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. You want me to start with the students? Okay. So, we're gonna start with you. Are you ready? I don't wanna rush you. We'll start with you guys. The student representatives.
Okay. Good. All right. Um, starting with Washington School. In April, they celebrated Neurodiversity Month, and the students took field trips to the library and We Rock the Spectrum. They also celebrated their wonderful Occupational Therapists for OT Month and their school's secretary, Ms. Fanata, for Administrative Professionals Appreciation Day. Coming up this month, they will be hosting their annual Muffins with Mom event to celebrate Mother's Day. In addition, Washington plans to celebrate their dedicated teachers this week during Teacher Appreciation Week. As a part of the hands-on curriculum, students will be observing the life cycle of a butterfly as their caterpillars have arrived this week. Field Day is also coming up on May 16th, and the school will be taking a field trip to Van Sean Park and Zoo.
Long Memorial School would firstly like to express their appreciation to their wonderful families and PTO for their kindness and generosity in celebrating Long School's teachers and entire staff during their special appreciation weeks. Your support truly strengthens their school's community. In the past few weeks, Long School has been busy preparing for their students, their students for the NJSLA next week. And the, oh. Long School has been busy preparing their students for the NJSLA next week and the Rock the Test Spirit Week. This week was fantastic, a fantastic way to build excitement and school spirit. This Friday, they're thrilled for their sixth graders as they head off to Fairview, Fairview Lake for their inter, intervi, environmental trip. It's going to be a day filled with adventure, from hiking and canoeing to team building and rock climbing, and a great chance for them to connect with fellow sixth graders from across the district. Long School is looking forward to a successful rest of the school year filled with many upcoming events.
Okay, for Smith School, they've continued to be busy as they embrace field trip season as well. The first and third graders recently enjoyed their offsite experiences, and this week, the second and sixth graders will also be embarking on their own field trips. Adding to the excite, excitement atmosphere, the Smith School community is currently rocking the Spirit Week. This has been a fun way to reflect on all the hard work and review strategies as the third grade through sixth grade students prepare to rock the state testing with confidence and enthusiasm. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, Smith would like to share that their teachers are truly exceptional, making learning engaging and meaningful, meaningful each and every day. Their dedication to their students, their passion for teaching, and their persistent efforts to connect with each and with and reach every learner are what make our community at Smith School so successful. Thank you to all of the Saddle Brook teachers. Your impact is profound and deeply valued. And lastly, Smith is also, also had the distinct pleasure of announcing the Smith School Teacher of the Year right before the April break. They are thrilled to recognize Ms. Teresa Martin for this well-deserved honor. Her extensive experience and wealth of knowledge has made her an invaluable asset to Smith School and Saddle Brook, making her selection as Teacher of the Year a clear and joyous occasion for the entire community.
Franklin School has been working hard recently as students and teachers are preparing students for the upcoming NJSLA assessments. Along with the rest of our school, they are, they as well are hosting a Rock the Test Spirit Week to help prepare and motivate students for the assessment. Franklin also celebrated their teachers and school nurse this week for Teacher and Nurse Appreciation Week. They have also continued to host many other school districts at Franklin School, including this past week, for their Amplify ELA program in K, in grades K through three. Recently, Edison, Pompton Lakes, and Mount Olive Schools visited Franklin to observe the program and had an incredible feed, and had incredible free, feedback about their teachers and programs.
The middle schools also began the NJSLA testing for science and English. The students are working very hard, and the staff are incredibly proud of them. Monday, May 5th started Teacher Appreciation Week, and the middle school would like to thank all of the faculty and staff for all the hard work and dedication they give to the students each and every day. On May 8th, the middle school will have their spring concert at 7:00 PM, and May 19th is the sixth grade parent night at 6:30 PM and their parent partnership night. They look forward to meeting the new middle school parents. Mr. Villarreal is having their middle school science fair on May 21st. This is a fantastic opportunity to showcase and support future scientists. And of course, middle school hopes everyone has a wonderful, restful, and relaxing Memorial Day weekend.
I personally would like to apologize to both the board and the community for missing last month, last month's high school report, but the high school has a lot to share for this month. The school hosted its annual diversity day, allowing students to experience and celebrate different cultures through food, an exciting break between students and their classes. Students also completed their mock AP testing, stimulating the exam to better prepare for the AP exams, which are being administered throughout this week and next. Additionally, the high school held its district-wide music day, bringing students together all the elementary schools to celebrate the students and the community's passion for music. Spirit Week and the Spring pep rally were also a great success, with themes ranging from Adam, Adam Sandler Day to Neon Out, radiating, radiating enthusiasm and school pride. Students participated in the blood drive, juniors took their senior portraits, and volunteers completed the courtyard cleanup. The school also held Decision Day, celebrating seniors as they prepare to embark on their college journey. And currently, their state test, state testing is underway for grades seven, eight, nine, and 11, and juniors and seniors are eagerly anticipating their upcoming prom, which promises to be a memorable event.
And lastly, information regarding the high school sports. The athletic department would like to congratulate Bella LaGuardia on being named Saddle Brook's NJSIAA Scholar-Athlete Representative for the 2024 to 2025 school year. And congratulations to Deanna Joz and Kyle Vuch.
Bukicovich.
As they were selected as Saddle Brook's NJIC Sportsmanship Award winners. The athletic department would like to announce the newly established Saddle Brook Athletic Hall of Fame is accepting nominations for athletes who graduated at least 10 years ago from Saddle Brook High School, who have athletic accomplishments that weren't being nominated for the Hall of Fame. Nomination forms can be found on the athletic page of the website. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, Ms. Filetti.
Thank you. Okay, I will start with the Hall of Fame because Mr. Ianello and Vinnie Laurentino hosted our meeting last night. It went very well. They are finalizing the nomination form, so we are looking to put that out by the end of this week. It'll be a shortcut on our district website, and it can also be found on the athletic page of our district website. So that will be going out shortly. I want to acknowledge Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to, of course, thank our teachers for all their hard work, everything they do every day for our students and supporting our students and our schools. I also wanna thank the PTOs because they have been supporting our teachers, and they do so all, every day, but especially this week, with special treats in their faculty room. So, thank you to them. Today was also School Nurses Day, so I know our school nurses were able to celebrate themselves today, um, and the, the students really celebrated them, which is really nice. I wish also to congratulate the singers that were accepted into the 25, 26 All-State Chorus. We have Vita, I'm just gonna say their first names, Mia A. Beck's, Rachel, Amelia, Gabby, James, and then a special congratulations to Vita, who plays number one soprano in the whole state of New Jersey. Yes. Our last, our final parent partnership night of this school year is Monday, May 19th. We are going to do a seventh grade parent orientation meeting for current sixth grade parents here in this auditorium. We're going to do that meeting at 6:30, and then at 7:30, we are going to do a mandatory parent meeting for incoming ninth grader. So, that's a mandatory high school meeting for our parents of current eighth graders for students who will be at our high school next year. We are also going to be hosting our ESL Family Engagement Night in the main gym. We are going to be sending out information. It's going to be set up where, almost like a cultural fair with the tables set up around the gym. We put, we are purchasing passports for our students who can visit with their parents. Every student will get the passport. As they visit the table, they get a sticker to stamp their passport, and then when they go to school the next day, they show their passport for a free homework pass. That's for K through six. Um, and then they can have a free homework pass. And we are also, the EMTs in town are looking to host an Intro to First Aid course and an Intro to CPR course on parent partnership night to our students in grades six through 12. So, that sign up for those courses are going to be going out shortly. I want to remind everybody that we had two Give Back Days for not using our three mandate, our three snow days. So, the Give Back Days are the Friday of Memorial Day weekend and the Tuesday of Memorial Day weekend. So, we have an extended weekend Memorial Day weekend. Our clinical interns, as many of you know, we had, I believe, 18 clinical interns from Ramapo College, and then we had maybe about five more from different colleges. Many of them were Saddle Brook alum themselves. And so, their last day was last Friday. We wanted to just thank our cooperating teachers, our teachers who took on the student teachers, they're now called clinical interns, and really grew them over the course of this entire year, because in the fall semester, they did their observations, and the spring semester, they do the student teaching and take over the classroom, and they really formed strong connections with our school. So, thank you to our student teachers, but more importantly, thank you to our teachers who took on the student teachers, because we couldn't do without you. Field Day at the elementary school, we are switching it up this year. So, we've been focusing on school pride a lot. Go Falcons, Falcon Nation, and you see subtle changes across all of our buildings. So, we decided to change up Field Day this year. K to three will have one Field Day at their school. Um, that will be one morning. Information for that will be coming out from the school principals. And four to six is going to have a Field Day here. They are, we're organizing it, the PE teachers, along with Mr. Ianello, have been organizing it. They have stations set up. The plan right now is to bus the sixth graders, one bus at each school, take the sixth graders here, then to go back for the fifth graders and come back for the fourth graders. The PE teachers have activities all set up, and it's going to be a friendly competition where they tally up their, their points, and we see which school is the winner at the end of the day. And thank you to our parents who are going to be supplying pizza and I'm sure some other treats. So, we appreciate all of your support. At our June Board of Ed meeting, we are going to be recognizing our Teacher of the Year awardees and also our retirees. So, that'll be a special meeting where we'll have those staff represented, so if anyone wants to come and support them, please do. As a district, we've been focusing on our two goals, our chronic, our two main goals are chronic absenteeism and student performance. So, I sent out letters personally to students who exhibited patterns of chronic absenteeism, which means you're absent 18 or more days throughout the course of the entire school year. So, if they were absent, if a student was absent 18 or more days last school year, they, they received a letter in August, just reminding their families of the importance of attending school and notifying the school and such. Then, if you're absent two days per month, then by the end of the school year, you're, you have 18 absences, and our label does chronically absent. So, what we did was, come October, if you had four more, if you had more than four absences, you received a letter, and we did that pattern throughout the, throughout the school year. Our principals have also been following up, and if you haven't already and your student does, your child does have a high number of absences that is bordering on chronic absenteeism, there's a strong chance that the principals are going to be reaching out to you to schedule an in-person meeting to review an attendance, some sort of an attendance contract or agreement. Our student performance, we've been working really closely with our teachers, our directive curriculum has been working closely with our teachers on, um, on targeting their instruction towards the needs of our students in an effort to increase, increase our student performance on the state testing. So, we're really excited. We have shown growth over the course of the last two years since COVID, but we are extremely excited this school year to see our results. Fortunately, we won't get the results until probably the fall of next school year, but we are very excited. We have high hopes. We know that our students are taking it seriously, our teachers are taking it seriously, and when I walk around classrooms, especially at the elementary level, and I have fourth grade students talking to me about the state testing, I know that we're doing something right. So, I'm really excited and we're very eager to get these results. Washington, as our student reps shared, they had their muffins with mom today. They hosted. It was very well attended. And also tonight, the SBAI hosted a Mother's Day tea that was also very well attended, and they did a fabulous job. We stopped by before the meeting. They had it nicely decorated. They had, the food display was beautiful, the tables were decorated, um, they did a fabulous job. So, I just want to thank the SBAI for supporting our families for Mother's Day. I also, I shared out, but I want to share again, our lacrosse, our boys' lacrosse team. They seem to be on somewhat of a roll. I don't know how they did tonight. I know they had a game this afternoon, but if you go to northjersey.com, there's two options to vote. So, we, we have, we are in competition for Team of the Week. Our Falcons won 3-0 last week. They beat Clifton, Waldwick, and Weehawken by a combined total score of 29 to 9. And I have to say that we have a young team, I believe, so they, I want to commend our coaches for all the work that they're doing with our students. And then there's also an option to, opportunity to vote for our Player of the Week, Jonathan Schnapper. The soft, Jonathan is a sophomore. He came up big in three wins for the Falcons by getting 44 saves on 53 shots for a .830 percentage. Schnapper hit a milestone along the way by surpassing 300 career saves. So, please, go to northjersey.com. You can vote as many times as you wish to vote, but voting does end Thursday at 5:00. So, when I checked yesterday, we were in the lead, but I do need everyone to, or we, we are asking everybody to go to northjersey.com and vote as many times as you could before 5:00 tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Filetti. Mr. Karati.
Okay, so first I have a referendum project update. At Coolidge School, which will be the future board offices, uh, waiting for the final installation of electric power from PSENG, and once that happens, they will finish completing the floors and elevator and will be able to get the furniture and move in sometime early summer. The windows, uh, the section of windows replaced here at the middle school, high school, and that is down to a few punchless items. We're going to be going out, bidding is next Tuesday for renovations to the front of the high school. We're gonna add some new, um, canopies out front, overhangs, and also we're trying to do the back entrance to the athletic field. So, those bids are open on the 13th, and I asked the board if we could maybe have a meeting a few days after that, early next week. We'll work on that date. The athletic field work is, is completed. The artificial turf field installation is completed with the lights and visitor bleachers. We're now working on the fencing going around the track, um, and the entire field, but that, we're looking to open up the, uh, field for use on Monday. Uh, we're working on other quotes to replace many doors, uh, interior and exterior throughout the district. That's part of the referendum. Replacing tiles at Franklin School, and we have window replacement at Washington, um, with also ceiling and lighting upgrades in both the, um, main and upper floors. And that's all part of the referendum, and all that work should be completed by the summer. Tonight's agenda, if you missed Monday, we had a budget presentation, uh, for the 25, 26 budget. We will have it up on the website. Tonight is the approval of the budget, and we'll move forward with that for next year. We have a solid waste removal bid that's on the agenda as well, and Food Service Management Company approval, that was a mandatory rebid. Every five years, you have to go out for new proposals. We received one back from our current provider, and we're looking to continue that. With next year's budget, we're gonna re, we're gonna be resurfacing the entire track. Still have the blue color, but now we'll have colored exchange zones, and that's like a new thing now. I'm not a track person, but I think it's pretty good. And I just wanna thank all the teaching staff and nurses for all their hard work they do every single day. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Karati. Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Wouldn't anyone like to speak? Good, I don't have to say this to anybody.
Well, agenda items.
For agenda items. Then I don't have to do, okay. Can I have a motion to close?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so board action items. We have B2425.41 through B2425.45. Does anyone have any questions?
Point 42 was the HIB that we shared last month in closed session. We have the continuation of a long-term suspension. The comprehensive equity plan is mandated, and our high school will enroll, we always do every year, a member of the NJSIAA.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Mr. Arcomando.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes.
Ms. Torvik.
Yes, but I will be abstaining from B2425.41 and .42. I wasn't at last month's meetings.
So, those, just so for the board knows, those actions only need a quorum, I mean, um, majority of the board present, uh, of the full board, so three votes, so they, they pass.
Thank God. Okay. So, education and curriculum.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. E2425.52 and E2425.53.
Second. Motion.
Second. We have some field trips. We have the, um, is listed as a field trip for the students in grades four through six to come here to this athletic field for their field day. I forgot to mention that, um, Mr. Ianello is currently away. When he returns, he's going to be meeting with our elementary principals and myself, and then more details will be sent out to our families. So, the PE teachers have finalized all the events and the activities that's going on that day, the logistics, and we're going to just meet and make sure we iron out all the other details as much as we can. It is a new thing, so there, I'm sure there'll be some kinks that we need to work out, but we're gonna try to tackle them head on. So, you'll see there's the, that is listed as a field trip. K to 2MD classroom to go to the firehouse, and then our marching band Color Garden choral leers to visit our elementary schools, and they do that every year. They started this, I think, a few years ago, um, to promote interest in our sixth graders that are moving up to the seventh grade.
Ooh. Any other questions, comments?
Um, I just found out, Ms. I, um, Filetti, that the team did win 11 to 3.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the boys' lacrosse. Point 53 is a student that, this, that was the program she was attending in her other district, and she just moved here and will be finishing up the school year at that, with that program.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, Mr. Karati.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Ms. Arcomando.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes.
Ms. Torvik.
Yes.
Budget finance?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. BF2425.104 through BF2425.130.
Motion. Second.
Okay, sorry. Any questions?
I know Mr. Karati went through these on Monday, so.
You don't wanna go through them again, I assume. Everybody's good? Roll call, please.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Mr. Arcomando.
Uh, yes to all, but I'm going to abstain from check number 66937.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff. Ms. Torvik.
Yes.
Facilities and operations?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. F2425.9 through, what's it, through F2425.10.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Mr. Arcomando.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff. Ms. Torvik.
Yes.
So, there's no policy, so negotiations?
Uh, at the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following item. N2425.4 to approve the sidebar agreement, number one, between the SB, Saddle Brook Board of Ed and the Saddle Brook, uh, Board, uh.
What's the AA?
Administrators.
Administrative Association. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I have a second? Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody? Roll call, please. When you have, when you're ready. Oh, okay.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Ms. Arcomando.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff. Ms. Torvik.
Yes.
All right, personnel. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. P2425.75 through P2325.85.
Just one thing before your motion. You could tell them which one.
That's what, that was my question, I apologize.
Sorry.
Um, no, it's okay. So, the approval from the negotiation with the SBAA, so now for the non-tenured administrative staff, the board members have the link to the exhibit, um, and the title of Brooke Hannenberg that is part of that addendum is now going to change. So, right now, it says Supervisor of Early Childhood and Special Services. It's going to be Supervisor of Special Services and Principal, um, as she does serve as Principal of Washington School, so that change will be reflected on the agenda.
That's on the exhibit on .79, as discussed on Monday in closed session.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
I'll get to finish my motion.
Um, I need a second.
Second.
There we go. We have a second. Does anybody have any question? I did. I didn't.
Okay, so .75, we have, um, a power professional who has resigned. She recently started with us, and she is, um, moving. We have a leave of absence. We have, number one is maternity leave, number two is an updated medical leave for one of our staff members. .77 appointments for, um, some of these are for next school year, starting in September, or really technically August for new teacher orientation. Number one is a Spanish teacher for our middle school. I had shared, um, during the budget meeting that the need for this Spanish teacher is because right now, we have one Spanish teacher for grades seven and eight. So, we are looking to, right now, our seventh graders are pulled out of PE to have Spanish a couple days a week. So, having another Spanish teacher at our middle school will enable our students in seventh and eighth grade to actually have consistent instruction in world language, and then hopefully be able to, in many, many chances, many cases, start high school with Spanish II as opposed to Spanish I. Number two is a power professional that is going to be starting this school year. Number three is a teacher of English and Special Education for next school year. I want to acknowledge, the steps are listed, now, if you recall, with our negotiation with our teachers, we condensed our steps from 28 to 21. So, next school year, 25, 26, nope, 26, 27 school year, will be 21 steps on our teacher salary guide. So, what that means is every single year, over the last five years, we've been, or last four years, we've been condensing the steps. And what I'm sharing that is because the step number does not align with the number of years of experience. So, it might seem a little off to you, but it does align with their years of experience
and the offer that was given to them. And number four is a power professional also. She currently works for ESS, and we are going to put her on our team, get her on board. .78 are stipend positions. Number one is just a revised ESY staff slash child steady team summer hours that is listed in the exhibit. Then we have some coaches. So, we have our head girls soccer coach, head girls tennis coach, assistant girls tennis coach, the head boys soccer coach, assistant boys soccer coach. Those are essentially the same, it might be a new assistant girls tennis coach, one of our middle school teachers. Then we have head football cheerleading coach and assistant football cheerleading coach. Those are new coach, new football cheerleading coaches. We have our head cross-country coach, a head volleyball coach, assistant volleyball coach, co-assistant volleyball coach. And then number 13 was, it must have been, she was omitted from the Climate and Culture Committee, so we added her on. .79 is the non-tenured administrative staff. Just note to the board that that title for Ms. Hannenberg does change per that addendum. Then we have the non-tenured teaching staff, non-tenured custodial slash maintenance staff, non-tenured bargain, non-bargaining unit staff, non-tenured administrative assistant staff, and we have a contract for Mr. Karati, our business administrator, for next school year. And .85 is to approve May 23rd and May 27th as non-working days for members of the SBCMA. That's our Custodial and Maintenance Association, so that way they are able to have those days off. That's what the board agreed to.
Thank you for explaining all of that. Does anybody have any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Rockamondo?
Yes, but on P2425.78, on numbers 6 and 7, I would like to say, good luck to them.
7 and 8.
7 and 8, yep. And on P2425.84, well-deserved, Mr. Karati. And yes.
Thank you. It's just getting sent to the county office, though. I'll be on again next, I'll be on again next, bye, thank you.
Want me to talk to them?
Bye, thank you.
We'll go talk to them, that's all right.
Thank you. So, Mr. Ochello?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Torbick?
Yes.
Okay, so committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports? I mean, budget was the budget. We did the whole budget.
I was reviewing on Monday night. So, we're good there.
Mr. Ochello, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Negotiations, there is nothing. Okay. Any liaison reports?
Nope.
Anyone?
Nothing this month, but we'll bring it home strong next month.
Okay. Nope.
I got.
I can, I can update you along a little bit, it's not too much. Okay, so Long School, as we heard earlier, did their teacher appreciation staff meals this week. They did a few different countries, they did some for lunch, they did some breakfast. Tomorrow's American Continental Breakfast, things like that. So, it was really nice. I was there at a few of them, and staff really enjoyed that, and I'm sure they thank you for that. In addition, their book sale also was the last two days. Tomorrow morning will be the last of it for those that missed it. So, if you're a Long School family, please make sure you send in the appropriate funds your child may need to buy some books. It is a buy-one-get-one for the children.
Bogo.
Bogo. Yes, bogo. I'm sorry, let me just go back to where I was. Okay, and, okay. Long School 6th grade committee will be holding two car wash days this year at Washington School, both on Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, May 10th, sorry, one Saturday, and Sunday, June 8th. Car washes will be $10, so take your wheels right over there, please, on those days. They are very excited to announce the upcoming color run, which will be held on Saturday, May 17th. PTO will be providing T-shirts to all LMS students and staff for Field Day, which will be held on May 29th for K through 3, and May 30th for grades 4 through 6. Fun and Games with My Number One Lady, open to all Long Memorial School boys and a chaperone of their choice. The event will be held on June 4th at Humdingers, and their end-of-the-year class parties will be held on June 23rd. As always, Spirit Sale continues. You can go on the website to order there. And as a friendly reminder from the LMS PTO, members can join their Facebook page. They're encouraged to visit their website, which is kept up to date with all upcoming events, fundraisers, meetings, et cetera. Their next meeting will be Tuesday, May 13th, in the LMS Media Center.
Thank you. Thank you. Any correspondence?
No.
No. All business? New business?
Through the chair.
Sure.
If I could, thank you to our staff for your hard work and dedication, not only this week, but every week and every day that you provide for our kids. And happy Mother's Day to the moms out there over here, and happy Memorial Day.
Yes. Thank you. Okay.
If I may?
Sure.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge, I know we have here with us tonight the two new football cheerleading coaches that were just approved by the Board of Education. I want to thank them for being here, congratulate them. We're really excited. I want to acknowledge, since I've been in the district, Ms. Knapp and Ms. Felderman have been the football coaches, so they have decided not to do it, and I really, we really appreciate Ms. Roth and Ms. Priscie for stepping up and coming on our team. So, thank you to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, ladies. Okay. So, I guess, motion opener, right? Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, has someone, did someone want to speak?
Come on, girl.
Okay, I have, I have a big thing to read, so you can make your way over to the microphone.
Is the microphone on?
I don't know. Is the microphone on? Residents are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter in the event it appears the public comment portion of the meeting may exceed 45 minutes. The presiding officer may limit each statement made by a participant to five minutes duration. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or individuals in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Okay, all yours. Mr. Liminosa?
Nope, not today.
Sorry, ladies.
She wants to sit down here and talk? Probably easier.